Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the September 22nd County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he could help you with that. That way we will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve approval of the county commission meetings of September 8th, 2015. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $735,761.41.
Pay the bills. Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? My only comment would be this is the bills for two weeks since we did not convene last week. So have a motion to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for August 2015. Item B, Register of Deeds monthly report of fees collected in August 2015. And item C, Auditor's account with the treasurer, county treasurer as of August 31st, 2015. And those are all on file in the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel with Jen. Good morning. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Are any questions for Jen this morning? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is a special commission action. Jen?
This is a commission action to appoint Carrie Benz as the Assistant Director of Human Services at a 2111, to her promotion to Director of Human Services at a 247. And the wage for that would be $3,155 by weekly. This is outside of the normal hiring range for a new employee at county. That's why the request is coming before you this morning, not outside of what we would normally do go for a director of departments.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Carrie Benz and welcome on board, even though she's not here. Maybe she's listening today. Item number six is application for abatement. Kyle Helseth. Oh, then we have Pam Nelson first.
The first abatement that you are considering today is for the purposes of the elderly freeze, so I would ask that you support that abatement.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Motion and a second to abate RDI number 38605 for 2014 property taxes in the amount of $734.07. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Pam. Item number B is Diocese of Sioux Falls, RDI number 41943, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $11,283.19. Kyle?
That was easy.
I said it all for you. Are there any questions for Kyle?
This is the older housing for the Catholic diocese. It's been in a state of flux for approximately a year and they finally got their paperwork done and entered, so they're requesting the abatement.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I would ask.
Oh, Commissioner Barth?
Kyle, so was it a new plan for that building? I mean, the church has probably owned it all this time, right?
No, it was owned by a private holding company.
Okay. Make a motion to approve it.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is a notice for Surde Township for the following new 25 mile per hour speed limit posting notification. Number one is on Ditch Road from 256th Street to the Big Sioux Road. Item two is on 473rd Avenue from 253rd Street to the Big Sioux Road. And number three is on the entire portion of the Big Sioux Road to the Surde Township. Second notice is item B, notice from the South Dakota Historical Society from the Terrace Park and Japanese Gardens City of Sioux Falls, has been placed on the historical registry, on the National Registry of Historical Places. Item number, did you want to comment on that? Okay. Item number eight is a planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Jeff Barth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually a cleanup of a lien that we approved some time back. We had the wrong legal description in on our property there and we need to make a corrected motion. I will make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to do a cleanup on the legal description of compromise of lien number 9945. Do we need any more than that? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Next is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak about anything that is not on today's agenda, this would be your opportunity. Okay? That will go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing on the Southeast Development Foundation's Governor's House Program, Lynn Keller Forbes. Excuse me. Good morning.
Lynn will just make you identify yourself again for the camera.
Sure. I'm Lynn Keller Forbes. I'm the Executive Director of the Southeastern Development Foundation here in Sioux Falls.
Robert?
Can I run this from here?
TV's not on.
Is it on?
Yeah, but our monitor isn't.
Our monitor's not on, yet he's still working on it.
In front of you that we see.
It's okay. I expect to have you look. Got it?
Okay.
All right. Just to give you kind of a history, not all of you, I think Commissioner Bender may not have been at the time, but about a year or so ago, I came before you guys and we talked about the possibility of the Southeastern Development Foundation taking some of the lots you received back from taxes and trying to develop those and put them back on the tax rolls. As you're probably aware, doing development in some of the core neighborhoods has been a challenge. You have narrow lots that you're dealing with. A lot of times, you're dealing with unforeseen things, whether or not the water and sewer's any good. And there's just not a lot of profit margin there a lot of times because it's somewhat of a limited targeted buyer that may want to live in those neighborhoods as well. So it's ideal for low-income, affordable housing. It's not something that the private sector has latched on to very much, and so we were asked if we would get involved and we've worked real closely with the entree Bob Litz on that as well. So in this, and we're finished with our first three houses, but I wanted to come back down and give you kind of an update of what we did, where are they at, what do they look like, all those kinds of things. So there were several partners in this. You guys gave us the lots. Southeastern Development Foundation provided the financing, the staffing, all of those kinds of things. Southeastern Council of Governments receives a $1,200 commission on each governor's house that it sells. They turn around and re-gifted that back to SEDF so that the homeowners, to help pay for the appliances. And then South Dakota Housing also gave us about $5,000 per lot to help pay for the costs of cleaning up the lot. So when we get title from you, it takes anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 to kind of clean up some of those things, depending on how messy the title issues are on them. So we developed three houses. They were all three-bedroom, they were all two-bath. We did attached two-car garages on all of them. We did all appliances, including the washer and dryer. And then the one on Grange did have a basement on it. This will give you kind of, I wanted to do some before and after. So the one of the lots you gave us was at 120 South Waltz, and this is an aerial of the old picture that was there. And then this is what it looked like. Before the city came in and did an emergency declaration, they tore this down within, I think, 30 days because the foundation was falling in. And I think that happened in 2009, so this sat empty all of those years.
Lynn, could you?
Sure.
Tilt that thing up just there.
Is that better?
So you're talking into it.
Sorry about that. Go back. Oh. That's what happens when I'm sitting here punching it as I'm talking. Okay. There you go. Okay. Perfect. So this is the demo when they were doing it that day, and I guess it was 2011 that they actually demoed this one. So this is the house we ended up putting on there. We ended up putting in a garage on the front. We could have put one in the back. It probably would have added about $10,000 to the cost just because of the concrete, so we ended up putting it on the front instead. If you're like me, I don't appreciate shoveling, and so I would much rather have A, an attached garage, and B, one that had less concrete to shovel in the winter. So that's what this one looks like. And there's another picture of it. We didn't have a real up-to-date picture. Unfortunately, the city, when they tore down this house at 201 South Grange, didn't keep a picture of it. This one I got from Bob. It came from your archives. I love the car in front. You know, it's an old photo. It kind of gives you an idea of what was on this lot. But this is at the corner of 10th and Grange, and this is an aerial of what it looked like beforehand. Now, when I looked at it, I was like, wow, this looked like it was a really neat house at one time. My understanding is it had been kind of stripped of its character, broken up, like so many of these houses are. And I think when Bob was on the city council, that it was unoccupied. There were homeless people living in it, dead animals, lots of trash, all those kinds of things. So the city did tear that down as well. So we put two houses. We split it into two. One of the things that we discovered is there's only water and sewer to one of the lots, so we had to put another water and sewer in, which was another 10 grand that we hadn't counted on. But this is at the corner of Grange. This is the one that has a full basement on it. And here's the one that faces 10th Street. And it's a crawl space. So I want to give you some ideas of what do the interior of these look like. If you remember, or you recall, for a briefing of those of you that are going, what are governor's houses? They're actually made by inmates and built by inmates in Springfield. They're two-by-six construction, they're energy efficient, and then they're delivered on-site when they're actually done. So they're not manufactured homes. People think that sometimes. They don't come in pieces. They are one building and they come all put together. So, and the cupboards are made at Pheasantland Industries at prison here as well. And these are just some more interior photos as well. These come with two bathrooms. The three bedrooms have a full main bath, that's what this is, and then there's also a second half bath off the master. So I want to give you an idea on the sales stuff. We sold the one on Waltz first. It was kind of funny, as these things go. We sold all three of these within two days. We didn't even have 10th Street here, we didn't have Grange here. We had people coming in and just wanting them, seeing what we had done. Now, we did, I have my Realtors license, so we did put Waltz on MLS and that generated enough traffic to sell all of them. So we closed on the two, on 10th and Grange, on the 31st. The one with the full basement was 129.9, sorry, and the other one with, was 114.9 for the crawl spaces. And then we closed on the other one on 911. I wanted to do kind of an economic impact. You guys took a risk with us when you gave us these, and I wanted to see what the payback was on these. And so I kind of estimated, and it may not be precisely, but 2% of the sales tax, and what would that be per year? And the annual impact would be about $7,200 in getting those three back on the tax rolls for what we sold them for. Okay. We belong to the National Association of Development Organizations. It's an organization out of DC. They ask for innovation awards. I submitted this as something that was different and new, and we were selected for an innovation award, and it'll be given at the annual meeting in October. So you also gave us two other lots. You gave us 525 North Holly and you gave us 303 North Fairfax. When we did this, we weren't sure what the demand would be. We weren't sure if we'd end up holding these. Hindsight 2020, we could have done all five of them, they would have all been sold. The governor's houses are about 250 days out, so we have ordered houses for these two, and they'll go early next spring. And we're actively looking for additional lots. We're hoping that somewhere in that five to 10 per year is kind of where we think our sweet spot might be. So anything that you have come up in the future, you know, we'd certainly like a shot at maybe being able to replicate what we've already done.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Questions for Lynn? Congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
That is wonderful. It's great recognition for South Dakota, but also for your office. It's just really great that we move forward. And I, congratulations to the commission on seeing this as something that would continue to grow our community and something that we can actually do for economic growth with our limited funds, and that's give little pieces of land that might not be developed to CCOG and have them move forward with it. So absolutely a win-win. People in their houses, out of our problems, and paying property taxes back to the county.
And kind of a neat side story to this is the lady that bought the house at 201 South Grange had lived in the house at 810 West 10th Street, and her house burned down in April. So she was displaced, she was living in an apartment, she wanted to stay in the same neighborhood, and so we were able to help her. People that bought the other two were single, I won't say elderly, that's all in the eye of a holder, but elderly women that bought the other two as well.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Great. That will go on to item number 11, which is a briefing by the City of Sioux Falls Water Division on an upcoming Big Sioux Aquifer Study. Mr. Anderson, good morning.
Good morning.
And if you would just identify yourself again.
Greg Anderson, City of Sioux Falls Public Works Water Division. Here today to talk just a little bit about an upcoming project that we have coming to map the subsurface, subsurface of the Big Sioux Aquifer from Sioux Falls all the way up to near Dahl Rapids. We've partnered with USGS to complete this task. It's a four-year task. First, first part of the task would be to bring in a company to use an AEM system, aerial electromagnetic system, that will fly over the aquifer in east, west, and north-south quadrants to put signals down into the soil that will actually map the subsoil characteristics of the aquifer. Sioux Falls has a large investment in the Big Sioux Aquifer. We have water rights that are up to almost 75 million gallons per day, and when we place wells in the aquifer, they usually cost about $2.5 million apiece. Well, with this modern technology where we can actually map the subsurface characteristics, it will actually help us in placement of those wells and get the best beneficial use for the dollar. The second part of the project is the USGS is going to create a computer model of the aquifer and its relationship to the Big Sioux River. The river is the key recharge source for the aquifer, so it's important for us to know how the water moves in the aquifer as we take water out with our wells and how the river puts water back into the aquifer to keep everything recharged. So I thought it was important that this project is beginning, going to start in the first part of October. I thought it was important for the county commissioners to know what we're going to do, kind of see what we're going to do. Invite you to our open house. That'll be sometime in the first part of October, so you can see the company that's going to do this and you see the equipment. And then if there was any questions you would have, I could try to answer them. We've already reached out to the City of Dahl Rapids and the City of Baltic. City Engineering has mailed out probably over 2,200 letters to every address, so the people of the area that will see this helicopter will actually kind of know what's going to happen. Can we pull that exhibit back up? Know the map. I don't know if you can get that on the entire page. But if you look at the exhibit there, you see the yellow lines are the flight lines. The red circles are areas that we're going to avoid because the interference of the equipment that's going to be used, and there are high-populated areas where there's power lines that will interfere with the technology, so we're going to avoid those. And we're avoiding the cities like Baltic and Crooks. So the yellow lines represent where we're going to be flying, and the red areas will be the areas we're going to avoid. There really is no healthy effects that we're concerned with. We've been assured that by the company that's going to be doing this, CGG out of Canada, and they're using a resolved system, specialized equipment and software that's going to collect the data.
Greg, how far apart are those lines?
They're about 300 yards.
How long do they expect it to take to fly over, that portion?
About a day and a half, actually.
Okay.
They should be here for about five days.
Okay.
Rain weather would cause them to delay.
Okay.
How do I get that in expectation?
Have the people in that area been advised that this is going to happen?
Yes, we sent out letters to every address, homeowners and renters. So that's what the, it's going to look like as the helicopters flying about 200 feet above the ground, and the probe or the sensor is going to be about 100 feet below that, and they're just going to follow those lines, north and south and east and west. The company wants to get in and get out before hunting season. We're not trying to do that. Not because they're worried about being shot at, they're just worried about spooking the animals, confined animals, mostly I've been told, poultry can be a little excited about the helicopters flying over. And it's going to be every 300 yards, so you can see somebody going across your property three or four times before they get to the neighbor, so.
Commissioner Barth, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions on our water usage. How much comes directly out of the river? How much comes out of the aquifer? And how much are we taking from Lewis and Clark these days?
Well, that varies based on time of the year and temperature and demand for water. This summer, we've been averaging over 15 million gallons a day from Lewis and Clark, utilizing that resource. Our peak day this summer was only about 25 million gallons, and so about 10 of that was coming out of the Big Sioux Aquifer.
How much? How much of that?
About 10 million a day. This summer was coming out of the Big Sioux Aquifer, about 15 million a day from Lewis and Clark.
The balance from the river?
So far this year, we've only been utilizing river water for about two weeks, and that was about 2 million a day.
Oh.
With all the rain we've had, there hasn't been a large demand for lawn irrigation, so the demand for water hasn't been that high. Typically, in the wintertime, our domestic use is around 14.5 to 15 million per day.
So we dump a lot of water on our grass.
Not this summer.
So, you know, with this device, you'll be able to like measure the underground, you know, say the presence of quartzite or whatever, under the overlay of soil and water?
The device will characterize the subsoil types, the porosity of soil. It can actually go down over 900 feet to examine the soil characteristics. The Big Sioux Aquifer is only like 50 feet deep at its deepest, so this can actually go much deeper than what the aquifer actually is.
Now, the aquifer north of Dahl Rapids is a lot deeper. Has the city ever thought of putting wells up there?
Well, the Sioux Falls still has future use permits for the Sioux Falls unit of the Big Sioux Aquifer, and that's from the quartz outcropping in Dahl Rapids down to the quartz outcropping in Sioux Falls. So that area is called the Sioux Falls unit, and we still have future use permits for there. And for us to go further to north of Dahl Rapids, we'd have to cross that boundary of quartz, and that's quite a distance, and the pipeline would be huge.
Yeah.
So at this point in time, our focus is on utilization of the existing water rights in the Sioux Falls unit of the Big Sioux Aquifer.
Okay. Any additional questions for Greg? Anything else for us, Greg?
That's pretty much it. We'll reach out to you when we nail down the open house. You've seen the Argus Leader. Last week, we had a nice little story about this project. We're quite excited, even though it's a four-year project. Yes, it will help us with future placement of wells, but the most exciting thing to me is the model that will demonstrate how water moves from the river into the aquifer and how the water moves through the aquifer. So as the area grows, the Big Sioux is the major source of water, Big Sioux Aquifer, and to be able to plot how the water moves, especially during drought years or extended drought years, so that we can utilize the water in the most efficient and effective way, it'll be paying dividends for decades to come.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you for giving me the time to be here.
Thanks for thinking of us. All right. Well, we'll move on to item number 12, which is authorize the chairman and the director of emergency management to sign the state and local agreements between Minnehaha County and the State of South Dakota for emergency, for county emergency management. Lynn Young, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lynn Young, Emergency Management Office. In front of you is our yearly grant that we work with from the State of South Dakota. If you recall, the State of South Dakota provides 50% of salary and other, or 50% of reimbursement for salary and other administrative expenses within the office. For that reimbursement, we do a list of projects, or a list of work efforts for them. Those work efforts haven't really changed much. Over the last couple of years, it's updating and then working on different planning projects as they arrive. Last year's grant amount was 227,362. Our grant amount won't actually arrive until after the federal fiscal budget gets finalized, and then it works down through the state that way. So that's why just about a month ago, you signed an addendum, we're a whole year behind from when we actually signed the agreement until we actually had paid for it, but that's the pace of government sometimes. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I need the commission to authorize the chairperson and myself to enter into the agreement with the State of South Dakota.
So any questions for Lynn? Is there a motion?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign notice of award, special conditions, assurances, and certification for fiscal year 2016 Juvenile Accountability Block Grant in the amount of $15,723 for the LSS Juvenile MRT program. Good morning, Erin.
Good morning, Erin Serska, JDAI Coordinator, and I'm asking you to authorize the chairman to sign this grant application. We've been getting this grant and acting as the pass-through for numerous years. Last year was the last year of allocation, but it came to our attention, and we were offered the last 15,000 that hadn't been spent down the last few years. And the group decided to use the MRT, which is an evidence-based model program that reduces recidivism in kids. If there's not any questions, I'd ask to authorize.
We took this to our policy group last week and discussed with LSS what the program was about and how to best use this grant. Money for continues in the JDAI, changes of philosophy and programming. Are there any questions for Erin?
Madam Chair, so is this notice of award, that we're not applying for a grant, this is, we've been awarded the grant?
They technically call it an application. It doesn't get awarded to anyone else, but they have to prove what we want to use the money for.
Right. We've already been notified that the money is available for Minnehaha County, but we still had to apply.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions? And I see LSS is here, if there's any questions for them about the programming.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this notice of award.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Erin. Thank you, LSS, for coming. Item number 14 is consider a motion to authorize the submission of a response to the solicitation of the U.S. District Court, District of South Dakota Probation and Pre-Trial Services Office to provide non-medical detoxification services. Robert.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson, County Commission Office. For many years, the county has had an agreement with the U.S. District Court Probation and Pre-Trial Services for non-medical detoxification services. What we're looking for from you today is your authorization to submit a response to the office to continue this service and set a reimbursement amount. And this is a service that is not used particularly often, but basically when the feds have inmates that they need to take and have in custody who need non-medical detoxification services, this is where they bring them. The rate currently is $140 a day. That was raised last year from $128.59 a day and we are recommending a response including that same rate as $140 a day.
Okay. Any additional questions for Robert on this? Is there a motion?
I'll move to authorize a proceed.
Second.
Motion and a second. All of, to set the rate at 140.
At 140, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 15 is consider a resolution to authorize the following delinquent property tax repayment proposals. Item A is proposal submitted by Dwight M. and Marlese J. Woods from the Woods Living Trust. Are you talking about these, Robert?
I am. As you know, we have the tax deed auction scheduled for this coming Saturday morning, September 26th, and in preparation for that, the commission office, the auditor's office, and the treasurer's office have been working with occupants on three of these homes that otherwise would be part of the auction on Saturday morning. Obviously, it is certainly a last, would be a last resort to displace folks who are in their home and move forward with the sale of an occupied structure. Along those lines, we have made contact with the residents, the former, the former owners of record, to assess their situation, see if there is a way that we can come up with a payment plan that works both for their finances and gets the back taxes, interest and penalties paid in a reasonable amount of time, get them back on track of being on schedule, getting their property taxes paid, takes care of the county and our fiduciary responsibility to collect the taxes, and allows them to remain in their home. To that end, we have three resolutions for your consideration today, one for each of the properties identified. And this is, the terms of these resolutions have been reviewed by each of the former owners of record and they have given their assurances that they will be able to fulfill these. Each of these have fairly unique, a fairly unique set of circumstances and so it's not, certainly not a one-size-fits-all approach that we've taken in drafting these resolutions, but these, this was a certainly attempt to find a happy medium between getting the back taxes, fees, and interest paid in the most timely manner possible, but also be reasonable to work with their finances. So I would ask for your support on each resolution, approval of each individual resolution, and that will allow us to, number one, approve this repayment plan and then also to remove it from the list of the tax deed auction properties this coming Saturday morning.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Commissioner Kelly.
Robert, do you have any idea what the, or I'm sure you do, the back tax, the penalties and interest amount to?
Yes, that is part of your, part of the information that's in.
Oh, down below, okay.
Behind, behind each resolution is the tax statement that was provided by the treasurer's office. And I would point out that these tax statements, these are as of today. So, you know, the amounts will change after the end of September and over the course of them making these payments and coming up to speed, to being current, those amounts will change, but those are snapshot as of today amounts.
Okay, but, excuse me. How much is the penalties and interest? Is that in here?
Yep.
Where am I not seeing it?
It's, it first says original tax, then it says interest.
So this is the original amount, these are the penalty, the interest penalties in this, so out of the 13,42300.
And do we have, do we have the ability to waive those?
I don't, not if we convey those, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Not if we convey those back to the record, original record owner. They must pay at least the amount owing plus those interest and penalties to gain the property back, so to speak.
Commissioner Barth.
Robert, do we know if these people are also exploiting public assistance and do they owe us any money on liens?
We did not look into, into lien, liens that were owed on this one. I know there were, there was one case where there was some, an application for benefits that were, was not followed through on and that's now, they're now looking to those benefits to become more regular on making, on staying current, but to your, directly to your question of a tie between these individuals and liens owed to the county.
There wasn't county benefits, or was it?
No, that was federal.
Social Security.
I'm gonna go through these one at a time. Again, proposal submitted by the Dwight M. and Marlese J. Woods, Woods Living Trust. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Madam Chair, can we discuss it a little?
Yep, sorry. Commissioner Barth.
Because I tell you what, people that for five years refused to pay taxes of, you know, in the thousands of dollars, they have valuable properties. They, they're living in nice homes and are choosing to freeload while everyone else has to carry the burden. I, it's, I find it very irritating, irksome, et cetera, and the fact that they have, you know, personal issues with finance, hey, lots of people do. I, I'm going to support this stuff, but I'm, I'm not happy that people are freeloaded on us and owing us tens of thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars. It's irritating.
Commissioner Bennigan? I thought you had a comment, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought you had a comment. Commissioner Kelly.
Commissioner, to your, to your point that I would say internally within the office, we have had discussions that moving forward, we would explore options to maybe look at what maybe could be done in years two and three to connect with some of these homeowners, see what the issue is. Is there something that, that we can do to facilitate getting these things, getting these back taxes up to, up to date before they get to this point? So that, that is certainly part of the discussion and understanding that it's a concern that we, that we do have properties that are, that are this delinquent on, on the tax rolls.
Tens of thousands of properties have their taxes paid every year and the fact that they go for five years without paying a cent, you know, it's irritating.
Commissioner Barth, you have to remember that, just a minute, that when they pay their taxes, they have to pay them in full and they can't pay a portion of it. And the other thing is, is if we've only got three people out of the thousands of people in Minnehaha County that do religiously and pay their taxes, and I think we have unique situations in all three of these that we wouldn't even be considering them, that, I mean, and I agree with what you say to some degree, but not completely. Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I, I think we need to remember though, they are paying between $1,300 and $2,400 in interest and penalties, so they are agreeing to pay in full. Yeah, they're delaying it, but at least we're getting some interest for our money and I don't know how much the penalties are, but I think the fact that they're doing it doesn't bother me. The threat of a sale usually gets their attention.
And if there, if there's one other, one other point I could add on this, when, when they do get to the point of making, of repaying these and getting back to being current, the schedule and the process of how they will repay is that the, the oldest year's taxes remains on and that is the one that's paid last. So it backs up and the next to oldest is the first paid, then more, one more recent, one more recent, and then the last one to get paid is the furthest, furthest back, so the, the county does retain the tax deed until it is paid in full.
So if they reneg on what they're supposed to do, they lose their property next year?
And they would, and they would be at, if that were to happen, very likely that it would be on the auction, on the tax deed sale next year.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second on item A. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is a proposal submitted by Mr. Leslie C. Buckenberg. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, are there any comments?
Madam Chair, I think we should mention the, the amounts involved here.
Okay.
The first one was $9,391.22 and this one is $13,483.33 as of today.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is a proposal submitted by A. Dunger.
Amorilis Dunger.
Amorilis Dunger, yeah, she's a flower. Amorilis Dunger, trustees for the Amorilis Irrevocable Trust in the amount of $11,218.45. Is there a motion?
There is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert. Item 16 is consider a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2016 Minnehaha County budget. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Administrative Officer. Today before you, you have a 2016 budget to approve. This process began last spring. As Commissioners, you have worked with department heads and elected officials to fine-tune a very tight budget. The budget presented to you is $79,639,277. This is an increase of $7.5 million over last year, but would point out that the majority of that is within the Highway Department of $5.5 million. Some key numbers for you to look at. The cash applied in total is $5.5 million, of which general funds are $3.8 million. Your goal a few months ago was to keep that under $4 million and that has been achieved. We would note that you are using 1.5 million of the $3.5 million opt-out that you approved in July. As a note, 20% of the property taxes collected are because of the property tax opt-outs in Minnehaha County. So when somebody looks at their individual tax, property tax bills, property taxes are the workhorse of South Dakota counties. And as a note here in Minnehaha County, while we represent, while the Minnehaha County tax bill represents 20% of a Sioux Falls owner occupied property tax bill, those monies represent 55% of the Minnehaha County's 2016 budget. So we are very dependent upon property taxes more than any other entity is, and so we appreciate what property taxes do for, do for the county. So with that, we would bring forward the budget for 2016.
Any questions for Carol? We have all spent many hours working on this budget and I think read it through thoroughly many times. Also, department heads came with their best efforts forward to bring us what was the best and most conservative budget that they could possibly give us and still make their offices work. And I applaud you guys for that because I wouldn't want to do it. I don't want to do my job that way. Hard enough to do the budget without starting out and writing at the bottom. Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly.
Some of us spent a year in here last week and, and after the convention, we went obviously to the summer study. I think we're getting the attention of at least some of the legislators as to the problems that we're facing on operating budget and on property taxes and I did notice that we were like number 18 or 20, was that, in national property taxes? There was an article in the paper the other day and we were higher, much higher than I thought. However, we don't have the, we do not have the income tax, which is making quite a difference. But on the surrounding states, it looks like we're about in the ballpark with our property taxes and valuations, of course, you go to Minneapolis area, they're probably higher, so I hope we're gonna get something out of them. They asked us at the last day to come forward with some proposals and so now it's gonna be up to the SDACC to be proactive on this thing and come forward and obviously we've only got about a month until our next meeting, so I think we're, we're at least getting the attention. There are some members of the legislature that say that, wow, we spent a lot of money last year on highways and we're not gonna be very conducive to spending anymore, but I think generally they understand our issue and hopefully if we continue to talk to our legislators and, you know, as the public understands more and more what our problems are, then hopefully we'll be able to get ourselves into a better position to at least, at least keep up with inflation and at least keep up with costs, demands that are being held on us.
Additional comments?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve our budget for next year. This has been, I think, the longest budget process I can remember. Seems to me we've had about three provisional budgets that we've approved and today might be the day when we finish with this budget process and begin the next budget process, but I make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Additional discussion? To speak to, Commissioner Kelly said they gave us about a month to come up with proposals. We have given them some proposals, but I think there was kind of a specific question, Carol, as far as they're looking for what we specifically need?
Yes, one of the things that the legislators on the summer study did ask for was what, what's the amount that counties would need in order to take care of the burdens that they aren't able to do? And also, what would they be spending that on? So I know that they appreciated Commissioner Kelly coming out with a ballpark of about $50 to $70 million in total. They appreciated that number, would like to have that drilled down so that they know specifics.
So I'm just wondering, is our office going to be facilitating with at least what Minnehaha County needs to send out?
Yes, we can certainly submit for that.
I'm wondering what our state office is gonna do, if we just need to send our information on them and strongly encourage them to get information from all counties, not just Minnehaha County, for those that weren't at the meeting and heard that directive from the legislators.
Commissioner Heiberg, I also would submit, since we talked a little bit about this last week, was also the impact of the TIFs. The impact of the TIFs that are payable in Minnehaha County, that is our share of the TIFs payable in 2016 is $421,000. This is roughly 1% of the property taxes that are collected for Minnehaha County's operation. Four of the TIFs are located outside of Sioux Falls, 11 of them are located within Sioux Falls. The impact of the TIFs on our budget range from 79 cents, that's the smallest one, to the largest one being $106,484. The $421,000 is a 22% increase over last year and the prior year over that was 18%. Another way to look at that is that the TIFs, that $421,000 represents 28% of the $1.5 million opt-out.
And next year is just gonna be bigger. Any other comments about the budget before we vote? Commissioner Bennigan?
What specifically are they asking for in reference to the estimate on taxes and the growth of that? Are they looking at just 2017? Are they looking for projections of years down the road where we're gonna see typical significant increases in public safety?
The legislator?
Yeah.
The legislators, the legislatures did not give a real defined box as to what they're looking for. I will tell you that what I would propose that we submit forward is an assumption of a few years down the road when we've got a jail up and running and saying we need to go through and pay for that. So that would be my assumption moving forward.
Well, to me, that's an extremely unique question because out of the 66 counties or whatever there are, there's certainly not 66 identical needs and to make a one equation conversation about how that gets funded is more than a challenge. You're gonna have three or four counties who have significant needs in particular areas and the other 60 or whatever are gonna have much smaller and different needs and how to put one formula together based on a gross dollar amount seems like it's shooting yourself in the foot for future issues.
Yeah. I think they're looking at this probably as a starting point and...
Yeah, I, I think they're looking at long-term solutions, not short-term fixes because our problem is really not a short-term fix. I mean, you could throw in $5 million and that wouldn't really resolve anything. It may be a lot of, a little incremental state, including the alcohol, the distribution of that tax. They were very, I thought, positive on that and so, and that's what we need is a, is a long-term look at this thing, how do we get the counties in better positions to have the revenues to take care of the expenses. Your point about differences, two counties, Bennett and Jackson, I'm sure there are others, and I can't remember, is it like under 200 taxpayers in Bennett County or Jackson, one or the other?
Jackson, it was under 200.
You know, sixty or seventy percent of the land is in trust land, and so they have just, you know, like a couple hundred taxpayers supporting the county, and the trust lands put demands on the counties. So they're, you know, that's, and those people are very close to, they're, they're operating on the, just on the edge already. Then you go to Minnehaha County, where our jail needs are, and I think there's only fifteen or so jails in the county. I can't remember the number, but of the sixty-six, you know, the vast majority of them don't even have jails. So here again, it falls back on us. They talk about regional jails, but we better have the, you know, if that's going to be the case, then you can better have the region bringing in the money on the original thirty or forty or fifty million dollars it's going to cost, so. But the one issue is, of course, that it's one county, one vote, as far as South Dakota Association is concerned. That makes it a little difficult for the top ten counties to have too much of an influence there, other than trying to sell them, and they're concerned. They're always concerned that all the money's going to go to Lincoln, Minnehaha, Brown, Pennington, and that's a tough sell-up there with that group. But I don't believe one vote, one county is particularly, in this day and age, particularly indicative of how it, how it should be. I realize you've got to protect the small counties, but that, that's what we're facing, and, and so to get something that, that supported the association behind it, and I, I think it needs that. I, I don't think we can go in as Lone Rangers in Pürle and really accomplish much. That's where we're going to have to be.
Okay, Commissioner Barth?
Ma'am Chair, I was expecting that we would discuss our experience in Pürle as a separate thing, maybe under liaison assignments, but as far as talking to the summer study folks, yeah, we made some progress, I think. I think that there's a better understanding, and certainly, a couple of senators were surprised at, at things. Senator Valli suggested the one percent sales tax outside of the metropolitan or municipal boundaries. Jenna Hager suggested reallocation of the excise tax on alcohol. There was some understanding of our issues, and I think that as far as what they want to talk about, as far as our future needs, I think the idea would be to keep us, you know, within the boundaries of the property tax limitation, so what other, what other revenues would we need in order to stay tight on our property tax? I think that's how I would interpret that. So the idea of, you know, raising it to three percent, or which, or the rate of inflation or three percent, whichever is greater, probably is promising, but so what would, what would fill the gap in anything over and above that, I think, is what we should be thinking about. And I think that we, we did make some progress with that committee, and, you know, let, let different ideas come forward, and, and we'll see where they go. But in the meantime, I think they have a better idea of some of our costs and some idea about opportunities for savings as we cooperate with other, other counties.
Additional comments? We have a motion and a second on the fiscal year 2016 county budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carol. Now we'll move on to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
I would like to talk about the convention and the stuff, and, you know, when you go to these events, they have numerous little seminars on different items. For example, I went to one on Register of Deeds, electronic activities. I went to one on the ACA and how it affects our, our people. Interestingly, the highest area that, where people went from being uninsured to having insurance, insurance under the ACA was west of the river. The eastern side, we were doing a lot better before the ACA, and, you know, I didn't fully understand how, how the subsidies end for people below eleven thousand dollars a year, but that's in fact what happened since we've not chosen to have Medicaid expansion. So people, you know, making twenty-five grand a year can get help from the, the government to pay for insurance. People making less than eleven thousand are dependent on county assistance. I, I heard sheriffs talk about their issues with housing prisoners. In fact, one sheriff commented that, I think he made the comment that he's having trouble finding room in the Minnehaha County jail for his prisoners, and because of our overcrowding, and is supposed to send his prisoners elsewhere, and he has to send the female prisoners one way and the male prisoners another way, and he only has, I think, three deputies, and it's a hundred mile drive for these other prisoners to go someplace. And so, you know, you drive them there, and the next thing you know, they have to come back for court, and you have to go get them, and in any case, the, the issues of jail capacity seem to be sweeping across the state, and it's, it's not something that we in Minnehaha County are, are having alone, and it's something I think we need to address In any case, there was also a nice seminar on CAFOs. Unfortunately, I missed a big chunk of it, because I had to rush to an urgent board meeting, but, you know, there's a lot of information out there, and, you know, I think at a national event, there's obviously a lot more, but I thought this was a pretty, pretty good one, and certainly, there was opportunities for networking with people of other counties. It seemed like I hung out with commissioners from Pennington County more than people from Jackson County.
Additional comments on the convention?
Just say, I also, was that the CAFO one that Jeff walked out on? Wondered where he went. But it, it was very good, and they just talked about the loss of economic impact that we have, since we don't have as many CAFOs. They compared us actually to Sioux County in Iowa, which we all know they have lots, if you've been down to Sioux County, but even the difference in the grain prices from Sioux County to Sioux Falls, which is about ninety miles, the grain prices are much higher because of the demand down in Iowa, which I thought was interesting, not something I would have thought of before, but it was a significant difference in grain prices.
It's like twenty-five cents, I think, on a bushel of corn.
Yeah, and I don't remember, it was, it was significant, but there were a lot of good seminars that we attended. We also did some, like you said, good networking and talking about legislation to move forward with the, with our economic woes that we have. Also, next year in the fall, Sioux Falls will be hosting the Fall Convention for the, for the State Association, and so we will be putting together that association, and so we did spend some time over supper one night discussing different programming and things that we would like to do, and I look forward to next fall, and hopefully, we have a very large convention in Sioux Falls, so.
It'd be the most productive and well-known convention ever.
We will try.
Is there any new business? Mr. Letts?
Good morning, Commissioner Boblitz, from the Auditor's Office, and I'd like to speak a little bit about our, my recent arrival here. A while back, you approved the purchase of a third DS eight fifty ballot tabulation machine. It arrived this week. We've unpacked it. We're waiting for ESNS to come and assemble it. So we're, we're real excited about getting that machine in there and, and integrating it with the other machines, testing it, do the acceptance testing and testing with all the ballots. One other thing election-related came up is that yesterday Darlene, Kim and myself walked over to the Coliseum, because I'd talked about having sort of a super center, if you would, of, you know, election activities all in one room, which has a very strong appeal to me. And I have found out that they have kids in there every day in, in that Coliseum now. I don't know if we can work something out with that or not, but kind of threw a little rain on our parade in that regard. And I also wanted to thank Commissioner Kelly, because he came in to the Secretary of State's presentation on total vote and sat in there for a while, and I think became aware of some of the astonishing complexities with that system. But I would also tell you that my confidence in the Secretary of State's office and the help that they've got, and the emphasis that they've put on total vote, and some changes that we are making downstairs with our end of total vote, that I'm sure hoping that we wind up better than we did the last election.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Is there any old business?
Hold on.
Oh, sorry, new business.
Good morning, Scott Wicks, Sioux Empire Fair, and I apologize, I'm coming to get kind of the eleventh hour on this. On the, on the city of Sioux Falls surplus auction is a piece of equipment that we could use almost daily out at the fairgrounds. It's a payloader they're surplusing. It's a John Deere six forty-four G. I didn't see it on the list before, I just saw it last week, so I got ahold of Robert and have been working with the city liaison, Jeff Schmidt. So I'm here to ask for your support, to go through the process, to ask the city for that to be surplus to the county, and then have that surplus to the Sioux Empire Fair Association. We, we, we borrow from Merlin Roy's on a regular basis. Dan Perrin's on our board, he'll drop one off, but as they continue to get busier and busier, and they're tied up with that big project on the interstate, there isn't one available right now, so we would have to go rent one. And with the cement in the center room and more and more events that are non-livestock, we move that dirt in and out quite a bit, and we would also use it for snow removal.
Any questions for Scott on the payloader? Commissioner Kelly?
He does need some action on this today, correct?
Yes, great.
Yeah.
Our, the first would be a motion for the commission to approve acceptance of the donated item from the city of Sioux Falls, which would be a nineteen ninety-five John Deere payloader, model number six four dash G, asset number fifty-one dash forty-six.
I'll make that motion.
A motion and a second. Any additional conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. The second motion would be for the commission with a unanimous vote to approve a resolution donating this item, which I just referenced, to the Sioux Empire Fair Association, contingent on the city donating the item to us.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? Do we have what you need, Cindy? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Go drive around.
Thank you very much.
Try your tractor. All right, no other new business? Is there any old business? Okay, I'd look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for contract negotiations.
If I may, also for litigation, legal briefing.
Okay, and for litigation. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you.